Regular Board Meeting, West Valley School District, November 12th, 2025. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during the meeting. The item by the Board Chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school business, non-student, and students. On the comment portion of the meeting. Students after identifying citizens after identifying themselves. You see, you may comment as briefly as the said committee. Basic rules of the common rule and effective all kinds. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual statement when appropriate, including when statements are out of order to make the reach personal privacy rights, are abusive obscene, irrelevant, or most improper. The public realize this is a trustee business meeting conducted in a public forum. Stand for the president.
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make the mark of proof that consent agenda.
Second.
Your name is Dr. Aldous in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed, again. Okay, correspondence. Laura, did you sign it?
I did. I'm gonna read my letter so that hopefully I don't cry. Dear Board Members, Administration, and Staff, it has been an incredible honor to serve on the West Valley School Board for the past two and a half years. As much as it saddens me to say this, I'm submitting my resignation from the Board as my family and I have purchased a home and are residing just outside of the district boundaries, which legally requires my resignation. This decision comes with mixed emotions as my time on the Board has been one of the most rewarding experiences I've had to date. Who knew that working for free, pouring over budgets, policies, student achievement, and levies would be so enjoyable and fulfilling? But it was, and I truly mean that. I can easily say that during my time here, I have had the opportunity to work with some of the most talented, dedicated, and passionate individuals that I have ever encountered. This time came with its fair share of challenges as we worked to get the school to a better and more stable position. But every single member of this team came to the table willing to roll up their sleeves, to collaborate, to listen, and communicate openly and honestly with one another, and to dedicate unimaginable amounts of their time. I am still in awe of what we accomplished and how dedicated everyone was to making sure that West Valley School emerged even better than before, and with an impact team to boot. Even when we didn't agree or had different ways of looking at things, we always reached a solution that was better than what any one of us would have come up with alone. True to the West Valley spirit, we were always better together, and we are still always better together. We have a rare thing going here, and I know that this Board and admin team have what it takes to keep that kind of progress and collaboration flourishing. And based on somebody that I'm seeing in this room here, I know that that's definitely gonna keep going. West Valley is something truly special, and it is the people here, the staff, the students, families, and leadership that make that true. Words really do not do justice to how phenomenal this team of Board members, admin, and staff is. I have learned so much from each and every single one of you, and I really can't say enough about how much I appreciate that. Though my term here is ending much sooner than I had hoped, I leave confidence that the district remains incapable and carrying hands, and that my children, along with all the others here, will continue to thrive. Thank you so much for allowing me the privilege of serving alongside you and contributing to the future of West Valley. With sincere appreciation, me. And please know that anytime you guys need anything, like my family is still very much resource.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We enjoyed our time, Richard.
You too.
Thank you.
Class.
Okay. We'll go on. To the informational recognition, if I have the report. West Valley, cookie dough, we have to eat food. Everybody here from that. Okay.
The fundraiser was like a huge success though. The one I hear, I don't know exactly how much they raised, but it seemed like a lot of money. I know I got a lot of really great feedback from like family and stuff about, yeah, we'd rather just give the kids money to run than have more cookie dough.
Yeah.
Something like that, so I think it was really.
It's north of $20,000.
Yeah, so I think that was a really good, because of that. A huge fundraiser, that's incredible.
And I know there, the PTO, I had, there was a sign up that went out. They're doing stuff for the teachers Thursday, Friday this week too. And then I know they're working on the regular stuff for the kids too.
Yeah. It's not easy for us, honestly. That's really impressive, so.
Do we have somebody that adds up as the president of that organization or me?
Yeah, Julie.
Julie Beatty.
Is she still?
Right now she's got a lot of commitment, she doubled.
All right, well. We'll hope that she can come to future meetings and maybe, I might as well. Okay. The West Valley Teachers Organization doesn't have something yet, anything. I've got the identity.
Molly and Joe did come to me yesterday saying they couldn't make it, and this time is hard for them. But that everything's going great on their end. They just wanted me to say that to you guys.
We wanted to just share a little bit about, like, some of their district leadership team stuff we have going this year. We're focusing on the warrior way, and every two months we have like a general focus. So this last one was all about kindness. And so we just kinda wanna talk about a little bit about what things we did. So we had activities, which is like a school-wide activity of adopting in classroom, and spreading kindness somehow. So we gave it some freedom to teachers to do that however they wanted to. If it was like writing notes and then, you know, surprising the classroom with nice kind notes or just anything with their buddy client, which was fun. We had the middle school room reps also come down to the elementary and present about kindness, which was also cool to hear them publicly, you know, have some speaking opportunities, and they created a PowerPoint and a video to run through it. So that was really, they are our, like, soup council leadership teams, so it's nice for them to have the opportunity to practice presenting and be a meaningful leader, so that was. Yeah. And then we started something called the Kindness Wall out in the main foyer, where parents can get involved with us a little bit too. And so we sent out a Google link form like that parents can write something nice about their child, and we can put it up there for kind of everybody to see. And then at conferences, I'm gonna have some just notes and paper that parents can fill out if they wanna handwrite something, and then we'll put a little sunshine up there for our kindness wall, just to kind of get families involved with it as well. We, there's similarities and differences. Like, the elementary is doing a kindness pledge. So Ms. Porter and I created a video that we're gonna send out to kind of talk about kindness, to go along with, you know, being a certified kindness school. And all of the kids are gonna sign that pledge, and we're gonna hang it up a new month of the year in our cafeteria. You guys have something also on your end.
Yeah, we have, we just have a middle school kindness wall where the kids nominate each other or write a little note about something that they did that they saw that was kind, and then they put the suns up on there, and you can see it when you go out off the door, but. And the room reps did do the parent nomination suns that are in the, a lot of them that are in the library, so that was nice for them to get involved with that too. We have a really nice, we've started doing with our staff, highlighting two grade levels every month.
Is it, it's not every month?
It is about every month. And we sent out a Google form that we were calling it Rise and Recognize, and other staff members can write different things about different grade levels. For example, it was fourth and eighth the first month, and so they fill out like different things about the fourth grade team that they see them doing, like to recognize their, the things they're doing around the building, kind of as, just a school culture building opportunity. And then Ms. Thompson, who teaches first grade, is very good at Canva videos, and so she takes them all and she puts them together. And Ms. McDonald was really great about getting a lot of pictures. So, we were gonna show you the one from October. And this, this month it's seventh and third, and so we're in the process of cutting staff fill out, the Google part, to do some of the. And then we shared it at our staff meetings and sent it out, which is the thanks. Okay, let's see.
It's a good thing we have a tech guy here that might be able to help us.
That was the computer, the old computer last time that wouldn't do it, but. If you guys wanna move on, I can work on it at the top some. I don't know. The last one I didn't load though was the bloopers video of Alicia and I doing that little thing at the beginning of the year. So we're like, oh, it's not working.
Worth, very much worth seeing.
It's a good.
Revisiting.
Well, can we move on?
Sure.
Yes.
All right. All right. Come back when it gets ready. Okay. Um, Marcia.
Hello, everyone. You would welcome a presentation. So I just was appointed as county superintendent on July 1st of this year, and Cal Keddon had retired, and so I'm thinking the rest of his election cycle, which will be about a year and a half, and then I will run for election again. But in the meantime, my goal is just to make it to each of our county's board meetings at least once. While we're not the same day, so that is kind of a little more of a challenge than I anticipated. But as I come out, I just wanna meet everyone, I wanna meet the boards, I would like to have a working relationship. My role as county superintendent is really to support boards as they're looking through things. So if there's ever a meeting, you're like, hey, it'd be great for you to be there for informational purposes, please invite me, I'm happy to attend. My other purpose is, within my first month of starting, the Office of Public Instruction contacted me and was like, you have a report due to us by September 1st. And regarding a county interdisciplinary team. So back in the 2019 legislature, we were supposed to form a team within the county, and our county commissioner signed it that year as well, approving it, that we have representation from a county attorney, from child protective services, various other entities and schools, a representative from schools, to form a team that talks about student safety, student information, and school safety. Very much the purpose being if we have someone we're super worried about that could cause harm to themselves or others, that we're gonna have a team, right, to discuss that and help prevent that from escalating. The problem is, we have the resolution, the county commissioners signed that, but the team never formed. So I send OPI the resolution, and county superintendents continue to lead in getting that formed. So that is my current, besides taxes, because that was fun. That is my current big project right now, is to just bring awareness that not only did this team not form, but it is the law, and we are being asked by our new state superintendent to be accountable to that law. So I'm just bringing information, letting people know about it, so that we can get some momentum behind. Which has the potential to be a very purposeful and helpful team for students.
How many people are you looking to spend through the meeting?
So it turns out to be at least 10. And then from each district, we're looking for a representative. The feedback I've got, the superintendents are helpful, principals are helpful, but school counselors are often the ones who really understand where a student might be at at the moment. And another representative can be a school trustee as well. So I will leave that up to schools to kind of decide. I also think once we have agendas put together, maybe it's appropriate for a superintendent to attend one meeting, and then more appropriate for a principal or school counselor to other meetings once we have topics outlined.
When do you expect those meetings to begin?
I was hoping by the beginning of the year, but that's probably not gonna be the case. I think I will be spending this year trying to get the team put together, and then we'll go from there. It's a slower moving process than I had anticipated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope this sounds better. If not, that would be. So it's a fun way to, yeah, to celebrate each other. And we're gonna do these every single month for the rest of the year with different grade levels and also groups of people. So we wanna kind of, not just teachers, but also everyone that works at the school, so. Yeah, they're fun.
Thank you, you should mean that.
I've never done that in Spain.
You should start in.
I should. Nice things about myself.
Yeah.
I have to do that all the time.
Yeah, sorry.
Positive affirmations.
You're gonna sound like you're gonna get a month.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I think you guys have a month on.
That's right, just a month of me would be great.
The younger kids will really like it, so it's like, I know, my kids come up talking about how the elder kids. Yeah. It's really fun to see that I took an eighth grade group down there, and they're like, so they all have their own little buddy now that they walk in. Yeah. And it's good for them to practice being leaders and love behavior, yeah. We just met, our team met right before this, just prepared for our next few months, which is respect and request good ideas, and so we'll share that stuff and continue as it comes.
Okay. Thank you. Go on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah. But you wanna go first, maybe?
Um, we have bridged along, yes. Okay, so we finally got the formal proposal from Bridged Health Alliance. No, Bridge, yeah, Bridge Health Alliance, I kept saying it backwards. And that's the, that's the healthcare from, based off of the $40 million state fund or that the legislation put together. And, you know, across the board, the rates only went up 4% for our highest, our $2,000 deductible, our traditional plan. It only went up between 1 and 1.6 on our high deductible, 100% co-insurance, and it's actually going down 3% on our $5,000 deductible, but it's a 70/30 instead of an 80/20. But the thing about them is they have 15 plans we could choose from. I would not recommend that we offer all 15, because I think Shannon might quit. But anyway, we could actually offer more, but they, basically they sent us what, across the board, they have. So right now, because our CBA says that the union has to approve it, I've sent all the information to Molly and Joe. They're sharing with their board or with their members, and they will have a vote, and then it'll be back to us to approve it at next board meeting. And it's usually, I mean, usually we do this in like March and April, but we have to do it this year because they have to have everybody's commitment. So to refresh everybody's memory, they have to have 150 districts to agree to this, and 12,000 employees, not employees and dependents, but employees around the state and school districts. And so this, this was set for years. School districts have been wanting to join the state employees' health insurance plan, and they have never wanted us. And so the legislation put aside $40 million for the schools to start their own health insurance. And it is a five-year commitment. And so like when I talked to our current brokers, they're like, now remember, it's five-year. And when we went to a JPT this past year, we chose them over Blue Cross Blue Shield, because Blue Cross Blue Shield went to a 24% raise. JPT said that the second year they would keep it at eight, a maximum of 8.5. So this is coming in lower than that. But also, we wanna get on board for the five years. There is a stopgap if for some reason the rates after, I think, year three are higher than proposed. We, we can get out. The other thing is, is that what's unique about the, there's two things that are unique, is that the rates can never be more than 1.5 of the US Consumer Medical Index. So there's, which, right now it's about, it means it can only go up between 4 and like 5% a year, which is kind of unheard of, like we, nobody is tied to that tight. The other thing is, is that they also can't, if their profits exceed 40 million, they have to pay the state back, so they are not going to make it, let it exceed 40 million. They will actually start kicking back to the, to the districts that are not using all of their allotted pool. They will kick back money to the districts, which that is, does not happen. So, I mean, I, when I look at the plan, it looks very comparable to what we have now, which was what we had, you know, with Blue Cross Blue Shield as well. And so I felt confident in making, you know, letting them know that, and personally, I'm on this insurance. So I are on our traditional, and so I felt confident that I would be okay having it. And so I made a recommendation from a business point of view and a personal point of view that I would agree to do this. And so now Molly and Joe are gonna go out to the members to get, see if they're okay with it, so.
Do you know how their network is with the local provider?
Um, that.
So that was talked about today at our Northwest Mass meeting, and it's a pretty wide net, because that's one thing districts are concerned about. But we were assured that it was a wide net, and that that wouldn't, and should it be a consideration for that?
They're using, the third, their third-party administrator is First Choice, which is, has a lot of providers around here, so. Whereas right now, we're with EBMS, which also has a lot of providers, but they're, but they're third-party administrators, First Choice, so.
Yeah, the decision to jump on is getting easier and easier, I think, as we get closer to that deadline. And the one, you know, good point I heard today is that, you know, if you're a district thinking about this, and you're really struggling, you know, and you decide to do it, and you get in, and then it hits, it takes off, it's an awesome program, you're a part of it. If you decide not to, right, and you miss out, then that stinks, but there's always that chance, like Maggie mentioned, that we can pop out of it too. So it's kind of one of those, so you don't wanna, you know, miss the boat on it. And I think that it would behoove us to jump in and join.
Oh, we still got that deadline, right, by the 19th?
December 19th.
December 19th, yeah. Yeah.
And our next meeting is the 10th.
Right, so we'll be able to vote on it then. If the teachers approve it, then we'll be able to vote on it.
Like we can recommend to you guys, yeah.
And then would that take effect next?
July 1st.
It wouldn't be July.
Yep. It's just, it's an odd thing that they're doing it so early. They just have to get everybody's commitments in order to pull the plug, basically. Like, if they don't, then, then it.
Then most districts in the state as of today will receive their proposal and benefit. There's only a handful of districts that haven't yet, but they're, they're working hard on that too. So we should know very soon. It just happens to be that our timing of this meeting is where it is, and, you know. But yeah.
So they don't get the required number, and then it just sort of.
Bizzles out.
Bizzes out.
The 40,000, those.
40 million.
Yeah.
40 million goes to.
Goes to West Valley School.
Are you guys thinking about picking what plans to offer? Or I guess, is that their whole plan?
Yeah, they're gonna offer some suggestions and that too, I mean.
Right.
Because it's definitely, at least above my head to go through the 15 and how it, you know, benefits most of our staff versus none of it.
Right.
But that's, that's kind of why we'd like to get going on this, so we can get that piece figured out too. But bottom line is, it's a, it's a good proposal, and. Yeah. And it is literally 15. It's not just like an exaggeration that there's a lot.
Like, these are the plans, and all of them right here. And I, and the red is what we, they are, gave us the rates on, and we're close to what we have right now. But those are all the.
So we can compare them.
Again, thank you. You're welcome, Matt, but.
So I did put one of this together for the staff and sent it along with all the information so that they could see the rates. This is where we are now. This is what, what Bridge Health Alliance is proposing, and this is what JPT would be, so they could see. what Bridge Health Alliance is proposing. And this is what JPT would be. So they could see at eight point five, what the difference would be, um, versus the four percent. So sent that out to them as well.
Yeah, thanks. That's, that's really.
It's, a lot of times it's just the bottom dollar is what really matters. What comes out of their paycheck. So.
And then.
Do you wanna talk about elections too?
Oh, the other thing about elections is, um, it, it, they've moved up the deadlines this year. So next meeting, we will be, um, doing our resolution to hold an election. Uh, that's at least a month early. Um, and so we just have to sign it, send it to the county. We did signed up, sign up by the June deadline to allow the county. I don't know if you remember, I came back a year in June and said, I know this is weird, but we have to approve to let the county run our election. And we did take care of that. Um, and so we will have to sign the resolution. We will have, um, uh, Stephanie's position will be open. Um, and we'll have, so that's one three-year. And then we'll have one, one year, which is, will be filled tonight. And then, um, that's good through May, then one, one year. And then that will get us back on the cycle of our schedule that we have. Um, there is a little, not to shock you, or there is a little blurb in the resolution that's put out by, um, oh, by OPI saying that it's, it's a blanket statement saying that we intend to run a levy in our blank fund. Um, and we don't have to give a dollar amount, but they're doing that so that people can, if it comes closer to the time, we could elect to run a levy. Um, I am asking if we can just cross that off because I think that that might make people nervous if they saw that on our um, agenda and, uh, you know, posting it that, cause I don't think we're gonna run a levy. So, anyway, I just wanna let you know that, that it, right now, part of the paperwork, it's on there. It's like an automatic thing.
So they're holding that spot open. But would you actually do a mission, just holding a spot open?
Yeah. In case you run into a problem and we need to. So we could leave it in there and just say a general fund levy, we don't have to. But then we can always, when it comes time, not submit anything. So I'll do whatever you guys think we should do.
I was, I was shocked when I, I thought people would look at that and when Maggie first mentioned it to me and I, oh my gosh, don't even want people in think that we're gonna run another levy after we just passed them. So and for my part, I'd like to, if Maggie can cross it out, I would be great. Cause I don't.
I'm asking OPI if we can, otherwise we just.
We're gonna need to do another levy next spring. I can't see it. So why, why create sort of a misconception perhaps that, that we are, I could just see a whole lot of people gossiping around and people wondering if they have the headquarter and the room and all that stuff. I just don't see it. So if Maggie, that Maggie, she can do, maybe. Imagine we're not the only school district that's gonna wanna.
I, I can't imagine.
Don't wanna eliminate it, but.
Yeah.
But we're, we're one of the few that so let me do, so maybe, maybe they will want.
Sure.
Anyway, Maggie's got that.
Yeah. So I'll be presenting it at next meeting.
Yeah. So just a couple of points. Uh, our daily custodian is gonna miss six weeks due to a shoulder replacement surgery. We are, um, looking for somebody to fill that position. We've advertised it as, um, food service and custodian to try to get as many people as we can interested. Right. Um, until then, and if we don't fill it, we're all just gonna have to chip in and, and help out, um, so that the kitchen can continue to function the way they, um, know how to do and that the night custodians don't get too bogged up with, with things. So um, just to heads up on that. Um, Phil was able to luckily fix one of our floor scrubbers, um, for no cost. And, um, just highlighting that for you because they're getting kind of old. And there are a few thousand bucks to, to replace. And we need, um, three of them. And right now we've got one that's really on, on fritz and, and a couple that are aging out. So that might be part of our, our plan moving forward is to replace those before they break and cause too much trouble. So you'll see on the agenda tonight too, um, hopefully you approve the hot water heater that was installed over MDA days. And it's working really well. It's quite a, quite a system and machine. So if you ever wanna go check it out, let me know and I can take you to the, to the room. Um, but it, it, uh, did did cost quite a bit of money and, but we're lucky to have it in there. So the big thing to keep on the forecast for you is, is our roof situation. We've got a couple of leaks in the big gym. Uh, one leak we think is a complete membrane collapse within it. So it's pretty hard to find the exact source of it. So um, I tell you this because, um, it matters when we go to replace the heaters there eventually in the summer, because to replace the heaters, we need to, you know, damage the roof. So right now we're in this really hard catch twenty-two because we've got a couple of bids in to replace the roof and they're almost to the dollar amount of about eighty-seven thousand dollars to, to replace the gym roof. The, the repairing it would, would be pretty expensive. Of course, it wouldn't be um, that expensive. But then you're looking at, you know, tearing out a repair job to put, so it's kind of, you know, darned if we do, darned if we don't on the roof. But right now we've got it controlled um, in a, in a, kind of a device that Phil was able to make that can isolate the drip at least. And so if you do go in there and you see buckets in there and stuff, that's, that's the why on it. And it, it's been exacerbated because of the weather we've had. I mean, it's been pretty, pretty, um, wet and it kind of hard on, on the roof in that way. But, um, we had roofers out literally six times over the last couple of weeks trying to find the source of the, the, the one that is the more important one and they, they cannot find it. There's, there's, um, not very many roofing companies in the valley that can even do those types of things. But we were able to, um, to get a couple of bids in for that. So I'll keep you posted on that. I'll keep you posted on the timeline of that, but that's probably the biggest thing in front of us, especially considering, um, our repl, our plan to replace the heaters this, this summer.
How much does that damage have ruined in there, replace the heaters? Like if they replace the roof now and then just can repair those areas around the heater?
Yes. So it would just be isolated around there. Um, now we've, we've got a repair spot too in the, in the leak that's kind of further south, um, of the gym roof and um, hopefully that, that sticks. But, you know, the concern is of course that over time and over winter, it's gonna keep, need to continue to be repaired. And then you're pouring money into repairs that, that are, that are costly. And so, um, right now we're just, we're just watching it really close. There's no structural issues with it. I mean, it's not gonna like come in, there won't be anything balls from the roof or anything like that. So we're still okay to, you know, host events in there, like concerts and things like that, games and stuff, of course, but, um.
Didn't you say they'd need about a week?
It'd need full seven days to repair, whereas, or I mean, to replace, whereas repair is pretty quick. They can do it within a day. Um, and so finding seven days and, you know, they won't do it when there's kids around. Um, it's because, you know, they just won't do it. So, you know, it'd have to be, you know, a time where we don't have kids in the building for seven days, which is like counting the days, you know, like.
Winter break, spring break.
Spring, but that's our option. And then we're done. So yeah, it's, it's, uh, but if, again, if we absolutely had to, we could, we could try to figure something out and, and get what the.
Is there only one heating unit? Cause are we just talking about above the big gym?
Yeah, yeah, above the big gym.
And there's three.
Yeah, there's three.
Up there. And then was the plan to replace like one?
Nope. Their plan is to replace all three. That lots. Yeah.
Yes, for three of them.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't wanna say the amounts out loud right now because we're still waiting on one.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, but they, but it's about.
Somewhere around there.
Somewhere in there. Yeah. Yeah. So, um, so then the other piece to, uh, in, um.
Is there any other heating that are not above the gym?
Yes. Yeah.
On the roof too?
Yeah. Not on the big gym roof.
Okay.
But on the roof, yeah.
But you're only talking about replacing the roof.
Of the big gym. Yeah. Yeah. So it's just literally on top of.
It just seems like if, if we're like actually getting water underneath the membrane, like we should probably replace it sooner than later.
Yeah, I think.
Cause that's just gonna cause more damage to water get in there.
Absolutely. Yep.
But the rest of the roof is fine? It's just the big gym?
Right. Yes. Right now we knock on wood. But it's not even the oldest part. Yeah.
And I will say, my husband said that drift over everywhere.
Yeah.
Like the roof must be leaking. I'm like, yeah, it said that.
Yeah, exactly. So, um, yeah. So we also. Yeah, right.
Just as we expect the roof's leaking.
Yeah. No, yeah. So we had a night custodian who took, took a position for us and then, um, submitted her resignation within a couple of days. So we're also looking, looking for, for that too, to help fill in. So, um, all in all, we're, we're pretty short in, in a lot of positions that are very important, like custodial subs. Um, we've got a couple of, of subs added to our roster and list, but still it's not nearly enough. And I can give a shout out to the principals for having to cover so much all the time. Um, it's pretty draining on them. And it's, uh, just hard on the kids. It's, it's really hard and it's such a thing like that. But we continue to try to find people and press on, but, but it's, it's hard to do so right now. Um, so I wanted to give Marcus a shout out too. He, uh, came and installed two more cameras over the weekend, um, in addition to ones we've had before, which is pretty cool. Uh, there is a new camera on the south end of the building that looks at the path going to the, to the rear of the school and also, um, on the shed out there. So we can see what's going on in the shed. And, uh, these cameras, as you know, have a good zoom in feature. So you can really zoom in and see like up to eight hundred percent zoom in and, and it still becomes pretty clear. So, um, wanted to give them a shout out on that. And then there's also now a three hundred sixty degree camera and what is now the first grade wing, which sees an exit that we've never been able to see before on the cameras. So, um, yeah, and if you want to look at the interface of, of the camera someday, let me know and I can, I can show you, Marcus can show you. It's, uh, it's really neat. It's pretty, pretty cool what we can see now. Um, one of my favorite things to, to do, and I, I don't know why, but you can, you can search by like, you know, animals, people or whatever. So you can see at night, like all the animals that are walking around the building and there's a lot. Right now we've got some cats that like the trash over here. Um, and I think it's been like every night for the past like week, they've been like trick getting in the trash and they look like mangly, like bobcat looking cats. And so that's gonna, there's deer all over the back. So it's my trail cam now.
I was gonna say, he hasn't had much success hunting.
That's right. Yeah. Like, yeah, I'm gonna, but anyway. So it's, and, and it can do things for us, like we can, um, put in like license plate numbers of people who, you know, are like not allowed to be on the premises. And if the, you know, camera can pick up their license plate in the parking lot, they can send us like, hey, this person's here. Um, you can. Yeah, it's really neat. I, I put in my license plate number, like I didn't even put it in there before. And it like shows every single time I've come into the parking lot and out. It's pretty neat. So.
Our new time clock.
Yeah, right. Yeah. People have to, yeah. Yeah, I've just got my cupboard. Um, but there's some other really neat features of it too. And, and so, um, so yeah, it's pretty, pretty cool. I think there's a total of thirty of them now. Um, it's close to thirty and then so that's phase one and then we're done. Basically, I think with phase one, right, Marcus, we're pretty much done. So with the next step for that is to contact Roundup for safety. And then they'll come out and do their inspection of the work. And then they'll, um, let us, you know, know. And, and hopefully though, they've committed ten thousand dollars to that project. And with the money that Marcus was able to save by doing tons of the labor for us, um, it's only gonna cost us a few thousand dollars to, to get the whole thing, um, which is, which is awesome.
So how does that work with Roundup? First date, do they only reverse what you have into it or can you do something else, also?
They, they decide how much. So we, we asked for twelve because that's the max you can ask for. And then you go and, um, you, you pitch your, your pro, your project to them. And then they let you know within a few days, like what they decide to, to offer. And so they, they came up with ten thousand. And so that was very generous. And and then they, they wanna make sure that you actually, you know, did your project. And you have six months to do your projects from the time that they say that, that you're go for launch. And I think we got ours well, well within, you know, just a couple of months. So.
Yeah. I would have wondered is if we spend, say, four thousand on their system, we get that extra six thousand for the round. I think here.
Um, well, the bid was actually, what I mean by that is the bid was, um, what sixteen thousand, like seventeen thousand? So if we put the ten and then the labor, it's only gonna be, you know, a few thousand.
So we spend more than ten?
Yes. Yep. Yep. It, it costs, uh, but we were getting bids originally for, for a lot more money than even that. So we got screaming deals for, for that. So so I'll appreciate it on that. And it has helped. Um, we had an issue with the propane tank in the back. Um, it was shut off in the morning. So, um, which is like, well, we've gotta see who did that, right? Or what? And you can, the time with our old machine, your camera system used to have to put it on a certain time. And then it would only go one way and it would only go like either two times speed, four times speed, eight times speed. And you had to just sit there and watch. Whereas this, like you can expand the timeline and drag up and down and see where there's ever been movement. Or you can even just put in like, is there a person there? And it'll tell you all the times that a person showed up, you know? So it, it goes like that. So Phil and I were able to look at the system and, and see that, no, it wasn't anybody that went over and shut it off. So it was a, it was a mechanical issue, which is good to know.
Cause the cats.
Yeah, the cats. Yep. They wanna flush us all out. So, yeah. But anyway, so that's, that's really good.
Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
Sharing your expertise will fit the crickets.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's, that's all I have.
Hey, thank you, Richard. We'll go on to the action items. I have to reveal nineteen thousand.
Um, basically it's just a pretty average month. Um, nothing special. We, we've paid out all of the, um, interlocal funds now. So there won't be any checks that we are paying on behalf of other schools. Nor are we distributing anymore. They, I've distributed their money back to them. So that is a wonderful thing. So, so no, those big ticket items that drew attention last year, but that weren't even ours are no longer on the, on here. Um, again, our system will print what we paid per BMO card. But then I included on, um, the second or third page, the actual individual chart. So you can see the breakdowns of what were charged on the credit cards so that you can see that they are legitimate cards or legitimate charges. Um, the very last few pages are student activities and that's marked. So those are the check registers for both. Oh, and a very, very last page is, uh, where we are, um, as far as actual versus budget. So you can see where we are.
Thank you, Maggie.
How far into the year?
Well, ten, like, but thirty percent, maybe.
I still offer.
Cause the starch killer.
Four out of twelve.
Well, oh, yeah. That's right. I was thinking it's clear. Yeah.
So you're right though, still, oh, third.
Yeah, about third of the way.
Four and twelve. I reduced that fraction. It's good. I did good time.
I'll make a motion for it to be announced.
Alves in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. In hands. As in the research is first in the office, you'll find, not you know, but you also. I think we've, uh, given the personnel activity report. That we have some more coaches.
Yeah, just, uh, just taking care of some of our, like our, uh, annual, the yearbook advisors, just getting those out of the way for the year. Cause they usually start working on that stuff in, in January. Uh, we got our tech warriors, um, coaches, and then we had to add an additional boys basketball coach. Um, and then the only resignation was our night custodian who worked for a few days.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report.
Well, sir. If there are any discrepancies, others in favor? Aye, opposed. In hands.
Jeff, was that you? That second, okay.
Do we know how many, have they had signups for the tech warriors yet?
Yes, it already started.
Yeah, they had like forty-eight kids. Yeah, they had like forty-eight kids sign up, yeah.
How many does that compare with last year?
Seems like it was growing year over year.
That sounds, that's, yeah, I mean, so it's grown by it. That you, you wanna keep going. Um, go on to the next one, the proposal to the new bus stop on the yellow bus. Um, Richard, do you want to address that?
Uh, yeah, there's a letter in there and a couple of proposals for different spots. And we looked at this when Brooke brought it into us and it makes a lot of sense um, for the young kids to be picked up. At the proposed stop instead of where they're getting picked up, cause it's only gonna be more kids in, in there eventually too and. They have to cross four mile road and, and the by, you know, that's still water intersection, so it's coming right off the bypass there. So, you know, to be honest, I wouldn't want a kindergartner of mine crossing four mile in Stillwater. To try to get to a bus stop that's by the apartment complex there.
They'll keep that one?
Yes, they'll keep, yes, yeah, it's just literally an addition, it's not a change, so. Hundred percent.
And this year there's only one, but next year there's gonna be two more.
So three kids at that.
Right there, so.
And then our next step would be to have, um, if you approve it, then we'd have to approve it with the county superintendent as well.
I'll make a motion to approve that the proposed new bus stop in the yellow bus route.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Gave out of district agreements, approval of current was by students moving out of district.
So we have four students who are already our students, they lived in district at the beginning of the year and have moved out. So we're just asking you to approve those four to remain at West Valley. They technically are now out of district students. So I'll send the um, paperwork to uh, Council Public School.
I'll make a motion to approve the out of district agreements.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye, opposed, unanimous. AV, MDA information details.
So this is a data privacy agreement from one of the programs that we use here at West Valley. And I'll go ahead and read what Tanya wrote in there and um, it's the, it's called EdPuzzle. And it's an e-learning platform that enables teachers to create their own interactive video lessons by adding personal audio. Questions and notes to videos from sources like YouTube or Khan Academy. Um, it helps teachers turn videos into dynamic lessons where they can check their students for comprehension, track their progress and provide them with immediate feedback. Um, so.
This is free.
Yeah, I think it is free.
We don't have to put any money out there.
Yeah.
Just a question of, of allowing us to be hooked up with it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the MDA for E puzzle.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? See the hot water heater replacement that, um. Richard mentioned earlier, we have a, a table with on that, it's in, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, it was quite a process, I guess.
Yes, we just need to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the hot water heater replacement.
I guess. Any further discussion? All those in favor? He outlined for the disposal of end of life technology, Marcus, do you want to? Those in, would that be?
Yeah, uh, so I went through uh, inventory of all the technology that was currently in the um, tech office there. It's small network equipment that uh, is outdated and it's been replaced. Sitting there. And then um, also we had both the old camera system and all the cameras that go with it, so those are sitting in there as well. And um, we did the hundred Chromebooks in the fifth grade there and we were able to pull out a bunch of the old ones. Um, there are some that uh, pretty much their useful life is done and so we're just gonna retire those. And then I rolled other ones, uh, as replacement devices to other grades.
We, are we talking about ten cell phones obsolete ones that like we did before?
Yeah, so the, the Chromebooks, since they still have a couple of life, uh, years of life for updates and stuff, we're gonna put it so.
So we're just gonna offer to, to the newsletter and then.
For twenty dollars a Chromebook and then anything we make off of that will go in the tech fund for any kind of repairs on other machines, so.
So we can just get that started and get them out. How about the cameras? Are you gonna put them up for sale too?
I don't think anybody wants to turn these cameras. Um, they're on the do not use list um, from the government.
Oh, okay.
We were not supposed to say that.
They say they needed to go, I'd already uh, say great, dated them off the main network, so.
They were secure, security wise, they were very weak and so it enabled people to hack in and you could, you know, set up C, so.
Watch the cat, right?
That's right, it's entertaining, done. People. But, yeah, right, you could see the dots.
I'll make a motion to approve for the disposal of the end of life technology. A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. He had a policy of this, these are the last two.
Last two, yeah, um, lucky for us, this is the stuff we've been through this uh.
Will you give us access to those things, sorry, I can't do that.
Oh, yeah, I can give access to anything too and it's, it's in the. There's an email too sent out that, but those are just pictures of. The, that's just links to the actual clean one too, that would go into our policy. Um, but the first one on three, one, four, one is basically. Uh, slight changes to it, it's our out of district policy, the slight changes that it took out the requirement of having the. Uh, requirements for accepting or, or denying an out of district application in your strategic action plan. Specifically, although we, we have no plans to, to change that. Um. The, what, what it gave districts the ability to do was to either deny or accept based on teacher contact hours, class sizes. Um, and those can be found in the accreditation limits. Um, so once you hit that, you can, you can have it in your policy that you will. Deny an out of district application, so um, there is new um. Like a new section of what is it, number one D? Where again, it's lists the maximum student contact hours can be a reason for denying the student. Also, what's specific in the policy now versus before, where it was recommended language in your strategic action plan. Is that enrollment can be denied if a student has been suspended within the last three years. So they added that in there and then I made a note on our current policy language, we do not. Um, need to add any of the optional policy language within there because it relates to jumpstart programs. So that's not applicable to us. Also, um, we do not wanna add the optional semester deadlines, we have a yearly deadline, which we want to keep. Um, and then the other language is the um, remote learning. So basically, students who are in um, enrolled as out of district can't just, you know. Enroll out of district and take um, online only stuff, they have to be here. To be able to do that. So the one um, advice I was given on this too. Is that we should put into our um, strategic action plan, special education program limits in those, but. The legislature avoided doing so in the main policy, so. And that would, where that would apply to us is life skills, if that be the only spot where we could even add language in that. In, in the life skills, correct, but general IEPs, we could not limit at all. Yes, because it, yes, we could in that. Not that we really would. Um, and then three, four, one, six, which is, which is our last one and it really doesn't. Change our day to day operations at all. I walked through this one with Brooke to. The changes to the policy or to align it with House Bill six hundred, Senate Bill two eleven and Senate Bill five oh three. Um, which basically says that um, we can stock inhalers in case of an emergency. Um, which, which we've kind of already done and would continue to do, just to, you know, if we needed them. A lot of our stuff comes from donations from parents, because it's really, really, really expensive stuff, so a lot of our EpiPens. That haven't, the ones that do expire, we throw away, but they're from parents who, you know, don't need them anymore and or. Um, unopened inhalers that are donated to us, but this allows, this bill allows us to have a stockpile of that. The only change to it um, is that if something is used in an emergency situation. Um, that we have to let the Department of Health and Human Services know within three days. So that's a change to the law. The other change is that it extended liability protections. Um, for staff operating in good faith on, 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 which is, which is a good thing, I feel, so. So those are a couple of changes to, to policy that we'll put in the books and. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, after, after they're approved, I, I have to go in and change them. Yeah. Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah, you're welcome.
That's really, that's great. I'll make a motion to approve the policy adjustments for three, one, four, one and three, four, one, six.
Well, second.
If there are any further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous. B, that was one of the last action item. Action item, point, I'm making instant business appointment for the new. Order.
New board of trustee, yep. Yep.
Okay, and so we're making an affirmation because we have only one person applied for the position. So we can make an appointment by affirmation, which.
Yeah. I think we should, we should make a speech.
Talk about his years of experience. I could get, I could make the speech. On behalf, I kinda sent him an email or a text uh, after Richard had made contact with him and. Gave him all the highlights of working with us, so, and last but not least, you would get to see me once a month. We went from sitting side by side for sixteen years or with a wall between us and so at least once a month he gets to see me, so.
So, and would you like to introduce?
Uh, yes, so this is Mark Dennehy, um, he's a newly retired uh, activities director and uh, assistant principal at Glacier High School. He was with Flathead, he was with Glacier since its inception, um, very instrumental in getting it going, so that is one thing that. Would be wonderful to have him on board, he knows about expanding schools. Um, he was with Flathead High School. What, seven years prior to that?
As the activities director.
As the activities director, a teacher before that. Um, he currently actually was recruited by MHSA to uh, be a mentor for new ADs. Uh, he's that good at his job, he was the go-to guy, um, he lives in our district. And one of the things that he brings is that he's, has multiple years of experience in administration, being on a board, um. Uh, facility expansion, all the things that we could potentially be seeing down the line. Um, and he could just hit the ground running, we don't have to teach him how to be on a board, so. Mark Dennehy, and he lives in our district.
Thank you, Maggie, and uh, you know, Maggie, just, you know, I got a message from Richard and Maggie as well. Um, and being retired, um, it's just a blessing, being in education throughout the years and uh, it's an opportunity to serve. And uh, many great people I've, I've touched either directly or indirectly, I think, almost everyone or. Majority of people in this room and um, edu- education's been a gift. And uh, it's probably time I, I do a little bit more for it because I've received so much from. Thank you, thanks, Mark.
Thank you, thank you.
Really lucky to have you. Pure excitement here, so.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. We're gonna make it, that's for sure. Okay, so we. Um, entertain a motion to um.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Dennehy as the new board of trustee.
Well, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? You know, so, Mr. Dennehy is now a member of our board of trustees.
You don't have to call him that.
And he will.
You can call him, Marc.
I was trying to think, why are we gonna do this?
Mr. Dennehy, that sounds good.
And now Marcia's here, so this will be kind of convenient for, for us that we can have the. Wearing it right now and it'll be about the other.
Be on camera forever.
I, Mark Dennehy. Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Montana. And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity, so help me God.
All right, now we're gonna sign the papers. You are going to. And sign. You give your new board members a new board packet.
Yes.
Someday. That was confident.
It's in, it's in the car.
I think we can adjourn then.
I know, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Stephanie's made the motion and who would you, who? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thanks, Mark.